Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 7th, 2007. This evening, City Council is meeting in special session. Thus, we will be following our abbreviated agenda. We do have a forum with all seven members present. Ordinance 2707, an ordinance, this is the third reading, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations, Mark Weiner, for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor subdivision. Member Phillips?
I don't have my thing in front of me. Mr. President, I'm of adoption of 02707.
Second.
This is a minor subdivision. We had a recommendation from the Planning Commission when we talked about it in committee. The only thing we were really waiting for was a letter from ODOT because it is fairly close to the off-ramp from 33, and they did receive a letter saying that if he needed road access for that one lot, that that would be okay with them.
We have motion to adopt in second. Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2707?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2907, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance, number Wild.
I move adoption of 02907.
Second.
Okay, this is appropriating some money, $22,000, to the Athens Enhancement Fund. Essentially, if my memory is correct, it's partially for the paint program and partially for the West State Street Cemetery improvements.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2907?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3007, an ordinance repealing ordinance 012503, closing a portion of Court and Washington Streets on the second Sunday of each month from April through November to accommodate farmers' market and local artisans. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, ordinance 3007 is simply repealing our previous arrangements for the arts market. I move for adoption of ordinance 3007.
Second.
And all of that other stuff.
You'd think after all these years, all of us would be able to do such a thing without...
That's my biggest blind spot.
Mine too.
Anyway, we need to get rid of it.
Okay. Let's see, everybody else agrees with you. Is there further discussion on ordinance 3007? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has gotten rid of. Ordinance 3107, an ordinance closing a portion of East State Street on the first Saturday in May, July, and October 2007 to accommodate farmers' market and local artisans. Again, member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to amend 3107 to...
Second.
Okay, go ahead. The amendment would be to remove the words "farmers' market" and leave it "the local artisans' market" and declaring an emergency. And the reason for the amendment, and I know Debbie asked me about this when we first discussed it, but since then, it's been discussed with the farmers' market board, and although they participate, they feel that it's misleading to the public for it to say "farmers' market" because they do not bring produce, and they feel that it's caused some confusion. So, they would prefer it be called "the artist's market" or "the artisan market," and they would participate rather than have it be called "the farmers' market."
Motion in a second to amend ordinance 3107 as stated and also to add an emergency clause. Further discussion on the amendment only? Yes, member Bishop.
On the farmers' market aspect, I guess I'm wondering why, I thought when we discussed it, that they did bring some food product, and I think we said it was a really nice way to introduce, you know, students, et cetera, to organic produce. So, has that changed?
It really has not. It's a logistic thing, and they felt that they didn't want it called "the farmers' market," but they wanted to be able to bring their things there, and we have four or five that pretty regularly participate.
Bring produce.
And they don't bring produce, and that's exactly the problem. It's more like the jellies are there, some baked goods, you know, it really isn't produce, except very occasionally someone will bring corn. For example, last year...
Okay, but they know that they are invited to do so.
They do.
And it could be a place for them to sell.
Right, and it was at their request that we changed the wording so that it would reflect that.
Okay.
Further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 3107 has been amended, and an emergency clause has been added, and it has been read for the first time.
Mr. President, I move suspension of the rules on 3107.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is because the first market is May the 5th.
Is there further discussion on suspension of council rules, ordinance 3107? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended. Would you like to adopt?
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 3107.
Second.
We'd like to have these markets, that's the reason.
Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3107?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3307, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a building and rooftop lease agreement with New Par BBA Verizon Wireless. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 0...
33?
33, thank you. 07?
Second.
We are changing the configuration of parking garage in order to allow this to happen. Several people have talked about it. I talked about it first. I can't remember who talked about it, 7 maybe, second maybe you, Jim. And here it is on the agenda for third reading. That's what happens when you miss a time. But in any case, we will, we will have some income coming in from this. It'll be, in some ways, a pretty decent deal for us, and there we are.
There we are.
And there we are.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 33? Yes, Greg, care to come forward, state your name, address? You have three minutes for your comments.
My name's Greg Broderick, 14 Grand Avenue, Athens. I would like to ask City Council to table this ordinance because of the issue with site planning. I have researched other telecommunications ordinances, even the city of Oxford and other cities around the country, and a mixed-use area such as we're speaking of for the siting of this facility is not what they call a proper place to put this unit. Now, I don't have any more information except what's the little description on the back of the agreement, the lease agreement, but the, in fact, I did send everybody a link, but unfortunately it didn't work for people, it was information-wise. But this is not an appropriate site for such facility because of issues with health, safety, and welfare, and also with issues having to do with downtown integrity, which are both talked about in the comprehensive plan. In fact, if we were going by the proposal in the Athens Comprehensive Plan, this sighting would not be approved. So, for that reason, I'm asking for there be a reconsideration and also see if there is other opportunities which would allow for a, there's a term used where that facility would be put on another provider's, either tower or with another provider's facility, and it'd be based on need, and I don't know, need and not speculation. Again, the City Comprehensive Plan addresses this in telecommunications, and this is not the proper area for such a facility. So, I just wanted to put that for it.
Thank you.
I did send it out to you in an email, but rather late, and the link didn't work. So, I hope that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion in second before this body right now, though, is for adoption. Member Bain.
I'd like to respond to some of the points that Greg brought up. One of them is that we don't have, I don't think, an ordinance that would have this change. I'm not sure we'll ever have one. I have, and it's, I think it's a general principle that we don't make laws after we have the application. I mean, I think the people made the application under the circumstances that we have, we're just, we're not covered at this point in time. Secondly, we exempt ourselves from the laws that we impose on other people. I hate to even say that, but that's what it is. And third, I think it is less intrusive, the proposal, than some others. The only thing that I'm concerned about that Greg mentioned was public health and safety, and I don't know what that means, and I don't want to get into a debate about it with that about, with him about that. But I think that there's a need, and it isn't going to junk up the countryside, it certainly isn't going to change the visuals in any substantial way, and that's why I don't see it as a problem. If there is some electromagnetic situation, and heaven knows, they've talked, I've seen enough information about it, it's highly, I don't know, it's sus, the literature goes back and forth, and I'm not convinced either way, therefore, I'm going to continue my...
The motion to...
Motion as it is, not to table, but to go ahead.
Motion in second before this body is for adoption. Member Wild.
I'm aware that they, there is literature both, in both directions, about radio frequencies and concerns about it. I would vote for this because I think it's less intrusive than we think. It's on the sixth floor of our parking garage. I'm aware what Greg's talking about is that we don't have a policy. It was recommended in Paul Gremeyer's plan to start looking at a policy of what to do without cell towers. I think most of the cell towers, the one we have in the city is a flagpole, the other one is Monticello Village, and most of the other ones are outside the city limits, the way I understand it. This one, just for information's sake, looks like it'll be 42 feet above the parking garage. So, when we say less intrusive, it will be up there. It'll be one of the taller aspects of our city, just so you know.
Member Bishop.
Will it be visible then, over the top of the garage?
I don't know. That's a good question. I mean, I look at the footprint and...
From where?
It's kind of hard to say. It looks like it'll be right there. So, you start looking at the distances, and this is the height right there.
Other comments?
It was given us in January.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3307?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Six one. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3607, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to upgrade the city's telephone and computer networking system, project number 228. Member Bishop.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 03607.
Second.
And this is to upgrade the telephone system and also the computer networking system, and we have discussed what level of upgrade we wanted, and council felt that something that allowed us to be wireless would be the most appropriate option, I should say, allowed certain of the police and fire vehicles to be wirelessly connected, right? Mayor? Yes, okay. And this basically is a $502,000 expense. Some of it comes from the unappropriated balances and capital improvements funds, and it was discussed, and I gather there is a real need for this project.
Have you ever spent a half million dollars before?
No.
Other comments? Member Bain.
I guess, but I'm questioning now, did we come up with a strategy that assesses who is going, and not just money in the budget, but who's going to participate in this, in the vehicles?
Yes. Oh, in the vehicles? No. We basically know who the contractor is, and we know that the hardware, which from my last calculation was about less than half of this, has to be purchased through the state purchasing system. But in terms of who gets, but I understand that we did not include in here the cost of any new computers for anyone. So, I thought the last time we talked about it, the mayor was going to, you know, or you were here, was going to basically bring forth an idea later about who should get these computers or not, but there are no computers in here.
But if they're, if they're putting the materials in the vehicle, then...
No, it's not materials in the vehicle.
No materials in the vehicle?
No.
$502,000, isn't that pretty close to what we had before as a price? I mean, have we seen that $100,000 savings that would come from not doing that part of the project?
I don't think that was in there. I think the original one was without the...
Wireless thing?
Without connecting specific vehicles to it. This is for telephone infrastructure and local area network connecting of the buildings, replacing the wires, right?
The addition of the mobile was estimated an additional $145,000.
I remembered the number.
Fifteen vehicles.
Okay, so we're not doing it.
We're not doing that.
Okay. That's good.
It enables us in time if we wish to do it.
Well, of course, of course.
Member Wild.
Okay, yeah, one good thing about this is it can be expanded, and that's the thrust we're trying to get to here. I think what Nancy's talking about is whether this will just end up in, the departments will be purchasing laptops and everything ad hoc because it's a new toy, and I guess the concern there would be that it'd be something we look at in the next budget cycle, whether they spent it on new toys or not.
Well, I think we should not allow, I mean, not put money in that they can do that because I just don't think it's worth the money we put into it. $140,000's a boatload of money.
Right. It's my understanding that this does not pay for any of it.
Okay.
That's the extra $140,000 to connect the wireless and to buy the computers.
Okay.
This is hardware.
I trust Jim will take care of it then.
Other comments?
Okay.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3607?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now, ordinances for second reading. 03707, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 21 Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 2103 Application Procedure for Subdivision Approval and 2111 Definitions. Ordinance 3807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 Zoning, Table A, Schedule of Bulk Control. Ordinance 3907, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit applications and enter into agreements with the Appalachian Regional Commission and other agencies for grant funds and to purchase, I'm sorry, and to pursue other funding sources available for the construction of access roads. Ordinance 4107, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with University Estates. Ordinance 4207, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into capital improvements project agreements with the Cultural Arts Commission and declaring an emergency. Now, on to resolution for first reading. No ordinances for first reading? R0607, a resolution declaring it necessary to construct new sidewalk on the east side in replacement of existing sidewalk and curb as required on the west side of Stewart Street between East Union Street and Playground Drive to include the installation of ADA-approved handicap ramps, a distance of approximately 658 feet, and declaring an emergency. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let council know this is a three-readings resolution, so this will be the first reading, and then we'll do it next two times. As it states, this is declaring that this is necessary to do this construction down on Stewart Street, do the sidewalk. This is the first step of what could be six steps in completing this project. This is the first step, the resolution, necessity, and then after that, we'll do a notice to the property owners by certified mail if they have any objections, then we have to go through an objections board, and so on, and then we'll move on to proceed with the improvements and appropriating the funds. So, we'll do this two more times before we move on.
Other comments? Resolution 0607 has been read for the first time. On to other business, a motion to remove ordinance 01807 from the table.
Tell me.
01807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, plus you, member Bain. Traffic Code Section 7.09.99. Member Bain.
I move to, I move to remove it from the table.
Second.
And it's read for, it's at third reading, so I move adoption of 01807.
Do we have to vote on the, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Only if you want to adopt. Now, we've removed it from the table, and we have a second. Is there further discussion on removing from the table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been removed from the table.
So many ayes.
Read for the third time.
I move adoption of 01807.
Second.
01807 is an ordinance that accompanies our earlier efforts at increasing the number of police, police officers on our force. The goal is to increase, perhaps more neighborhood policing, at least that was the hope. The neighborhood associations ask for this increase because they feel that there's way too much, well, they'd like to see some expansion from Walmart and Walmart stealing electronics and downtown bars into the neighborhoods, and I guess I go along with that a bit. And so, one way to do it is to increase the personnel, and so that's what we plan to do. We did it in the ordinance, personnel ordinance, it takes a while to get the people on board, and so this is the companion piece. I went to the mayor last fall, I think we had talked about it in committee, and asked him, how can we fund two additional police officers? And he came back with a pretty comprehensive plan to increase our parking tickets to a point that they're commensurate with those charged by the other big, the 500-pound gorilla entity in our area. And so, we are increasing them, but at the same time, we lengthen the amount of time that the payment could be made to help the people who are parking illegally have a, have a little bit of a window of opportunity in case they can't find the yellow boxes. Once again, this is an effort to fund police positions that will police the close-in neighborhoods, we hope, and add to the general health and safety of the area. All right, so let's go and talk about parking. I heard a lot of discussion, and I've been standing out in front of my house a little bit until, till recently, till the crutches, and people have said various things to me about it. Some people say, well, it's discriminatory, and I don't think it is. Nobody needs to get a parking ticket. And I think, I have three children, one of whom gets parking tickets all the time. I just feel like I made a mistake somewhere along the way because he just does it, it's his style. So, I know, well, it's cost of doing business, the cost of not paying attention to details is what I think it is. But having said it like that, I guess I'm a little harsh because my knee hurts or something, but let me go back and talk about the theoretical component of this. The literature says that in any city, there should be at least six spaces for each car. That's what the planning literature says, and that is a total crock when it comes to Athens because everybody knows there are not six spaces for each car. And so, the, our goal then is, since we're short on spaces, is to cause them to turn over. Yes, six spaces for each car at the shopping malls and other places like that.
Including all of those.
Yes, and, and so, to cause turnover, then you have to have an incentive. And several of my neighbors stopped by as I, they were doing a little sidewalk supervision of my driveway, and they said, you know, people just don't pay the meters, and they just pay the tickets. And they said, this is sort of a problem for us, and, you know, don't be, don't be dissuaded, and, you know, these are people who aren't necessarily in close-in neighborhoods, but we're listening to this. So, I appreciate their input on this. Once again, most of us get a ticket, we pay it, $10 isn't going to kill us. I do promise that, as I said to several of my fellow council members, that I would like to go forward and take a look at the pricing structure between the garage and the street. Because we do want turnover on the street, about a decade ago, I had a student do, a civil engineering student who wanted an internship, and I had him test all the spaces, and I know, we can now do it with computers, with the computers and the meters. And he was astonished at how efficient our meters are in terms of usage from start to finish during the metered hours. And I think that we continue with this, and if you have a ticket, okay. I, you know, I think $10 is what it costs you at OU in the parking lots with the meters, and I think that's one reason why I don't have a problem supporting this. We basically gave some, we took away, and that's my argument, and I wish Paul had just not tabled it last time.
I tabled it.
You tabled it. Somebody else tabled it. Okay.
Member Phillips?
Mr. President, one of the things that I learned more about in the discussion as this was moving through is the fact that it does currently cost more for people to park in the garage than it does on the street. And that's where I'd really like us to look at the rate structure because I think we want to encourage people who are going to be uptown for a longer period of time, like if they are going to work or something, to actually park in the garage, get off the street, and make the spaces on the street available for people to come and go to the businesses, be able to park and go have lunch, or park and go shopping. So, you know, I hope that we can quickly move to try to make it less expensive and more attractive for people to park in the garage, which usually does have spaces. I mean, I would, I would have to imagine that uptown business owners would rather have employees parking off the street so that it was easier for customers to come to their businesses. So, I feel comfortable with this as long as we're also looking at other solutions to make sure that there's going to be parking available and that, you know, it does become more equitable.
And I think a key point is that it's not going to be free parking.
Member Bishop.
The reason I moved to table this is because I, or voted for tabling.
Everybody's taking credit.
Everybody moved to table it.
I didn't move to table it, I'm sorry.
It was a great debacle.
I voted to not to untable it. It is that I think some of the issues brought up by a couple of the business people who came to talk to council actually were very useful in, I think, looking at all parking uptown and what, you know, how many spaces are needed for loading and unloading is a legitimate question. And so, my, although I favor the additional time to pay for a ticket, I'm not convinced at this moment that I want to vote on this ordinance. And I have a question about parking, and I shouldn't raise it because I think I'm just going to open a can of worms. But if you put, if you put $2 worth of quarters in the meter, then you can actually get, and you're two minutes late, you can actually get two tickets. And I've always, that has always bothered me.
I'll have to ask William.
There's only a couple of places in town you can put $2 worth of quarters in.
No, well, no, I mean, for two hours.
And be over the two-hour limit.
No, what I mean is, no, what I mean is, if you, if you park for two hours and you bump into somebody and you talk to them accidentally for a minute, and you're a minute late, then you could actually get two tickets. So, I think that some of these jumps are a little excessive for Athens.
Member Wild.
I'm only a person, they actually just give you one ticket, either for expired meter or over limit, but neither. Have you gotten two tickets?
I have gotten two tickets. What is this?
It's terrible.
What is terrible? I mean, it is terrible. I pay them, so I'm supporting the police officers, but I think I'm not ready to support this ordinance.
I don't find it terribly excessive. The last time we changed it was in 1998. We went from $2 to $5 for the overtime parking, and, and for the over the limit, we went from 10 to 20, no, $10, $5 to 10 at that time, and that's in 1998. So, that's quite a few years ago. The article that was given in The Post from February 9th of this year essentially is saying that OU basically writes 36,000 tickets and collects $564,000, over half a million. We issue 38,000 tickets and change and only collect 391, or 400,000, so, tickets, and get less money for it. If there's a cost to writing tickets, it actually cost us more on the side, too. And that's just coming off this article, I haven't checked the numbers. I understand the need for the police officers, that's what I'm hearing in the neighborhoods. I agree that we need to look at the parking, uptown parking situation comprehensively. I think we need to look at it both in terms of changing the mix in the parking garage, as Deborah pointed out, and we've discussed this before. We need to have a transportation committee on it, meeting on it. We had a discussion at the task force Thursday, I know. There are other issues, too, in terms of changing, trying to get some kind of reserve parking maybe on the fifth floor, that was discussed as well. There are always going to be problems with parking uptown. There were times when I first came here, there were four-hour meters and six-hour meters and eight-hour meters, and they have all gone away with the dodo, primarily because the uptown business people wanted turnover. So, therefore, there's a, there's a mix here. We love our cars, we want to get into cars, and we want to park right in front of where we want to go. This does not mean you can't keep track of the time, and you can talk to people, but you can say, you know, I got, you know, if you tell somebody, I've got to go feed my meter or move my car, they'll probably understand. They're probably in that situation where they say, you know, I think I'll walk you down there, and maybe we can beat up on the meter mate or both of us together.
I've never...
Okay, other comments?
I'll look here.
Over here. Member Patterson.
A couple of things.
A couple of things. One of the things that I've done in terms of this ordinance is talks more to some of the uptown business folks. There's a split there. Some of the business people are very much in favor of the idea because of the increased police, because it brings it up to the OU level, all of the above. And I feel that one of the reasons that those that oppose it feel that way is because of the fact that if you go out East State Street to those businesses, you pay nothing for parking. So, that's really the issue. So, not only do we charge, but we have fines and so on uptown. So, they, there are some business owners that feel that that adds to the disadvantage of having paid parking. But we also have a situation uptown where people park to go places other than the uptown businesses and would like to leave their cars there for a length of time. And just for clarification, Paul's referring to the Transportation Task Force meeting, which there was some discussion with Ray Hazlett concerning the comparative prices of parking on the street and in the garage, and also the feasibility of daytime rentals on the fifth floor. And we're taking a look at all of that. He feels he'd like to establish a need first, and so, we were playing around with some possibilities for that.
Other comments? Member Bain.
But Jinka brought up some issues that were raised, and I guess we never totally answered them, and so, I thought I'd go through those. One of them was the loading zones, and those are handled by the administration. We've never had any input on those. I mean, I think if you had a problem, you certainly could bring it up. The second one was the litter control officers, and, you know, why not tax people for throwing stuff on the ground, cigarette butts or whatever? And, you know, then we go to the code on garbage, and we find that that power exists already, and if the service safety director chose to do it, he could in fact give a ticket book for litter to the meter attendants, or the, whatever we call them today. Was that close?
Meter reader.
Yeah, okay. And then, the third thing, and this is my experience, perhaps, I was in Cruisen House for six years not too long ago, and at that point, there were two lanes of parking on South Court Street before Baker was built. And I know people who parked there, who knew exactly when the meter attendants were coming, and they would go out and stuff the meter right before they did it, or they'd move their cars. You know, so there's a fine art to avoiding parking charges, and, you know, let's not pretend that everything is all very innocent here.
You need to get better at this.
You need to get better at this, yes. I mean, that was definitely something, you know, I mean, people in living.
We shouldn't be encouraging, if it's two hours, I mean, the thing about the parking thing, there are fines for parking. I've been kind of talking about it like we have free parking. We don't. And my experience is, and I've often thought, these people must be psychic, the second the meter runs out, like twenty seconds, they're right on my car. I don't know what it is. But so, I was going to say, you know, I think they're very, very efficient. My experience is, this is the most efficient city I've ever lived in, in terms of giving parking tickets. And there are, you know, penalties for it. I just don't feel they should be raised the extent that we're raising them at this time.
But there's a bit of gaming. I just wanted to underline that point, just because Jinka hasn't cottoned on to it yet, it's time. Have to go out and sit on the sidewalk and watch them go by for a while.
Well, maybe those people will get caught. Well, they're not going to pay their ten dollar or thirty dollar tickets either if they're that shrewd, so.
Oh, yes, they are. We hunt you down, and they have been able to find me.
I'm talking about these people. I'm talking about these people who are shrewd.
You know, the only thing, Paul, I wish we could attach our parking fines to people that were graduating or wanted grades or wanted, you know, I bet we could have a higher collection rate, too. Member Wile.
I thought we were already doing that. Isn't that part of the tickets system? Right, we contract that out.
They've never missed getting me.
First round.
I just paid fifty dollars the other day for a collection of what I call parking roulette.
Okay.
I've never missed. I mean, I'm not follow-ups.
Well, there's a collection agency.
Okay.
They send you letters.
Our collection rate is much, much higher now.
Than they reported in The Post.
Yeah.
But I didn't bring that up, so.
Okay, but right now, we have a five-day grace period before we double them or increase them. We're not even doubling them, really, we're just increasing a little bit, or rather, by a third. We're going from, we're going from ten to fifteen in seventy-two hours, or five days. We're going from thirty to forty in five days, if I'm reading this correctly. So, it's not a doubling as it was before. It's still a chunk of change for people who aren't paying attention, yes.
Okay. It's not a committee meeting.
Right.
We have a motion, second, and a lot of discussion. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to weigh in on this? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance eighteen oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted, six one. Having addressed all items on our agenda tonight, we now stand adjourned. Now, we go on into the Transportation Committee, Committee Chair, Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a very brief committee meeting this evening. I'm going to start with Boogie on the Bricks, and then we'll go into the Business Fair. Boogie on the Bricks is an annual event. They're requesting a street closing beginning at eight AM on July twenty-first and ending at one AM on July twenty-second. They are wanting the block on Court Street from Washington to State to be closed down. And it's my understanding that this came from Ray. The Boogie on the Bricks Committee or organization, however they form themselves, have already met with Ray and have mapped out a proposal and a plan and everything. I have that in terms of security and cleanup. Council would like a copy of that for the street closing.
Okay.
I believe it's the third year, is that correct? Yeah, third Boogie on the Bricks, and this is, works in with the plans to try to build summer activities in Athens when our population's down a little and their living is easy. And it's a great event, and I strongly recommend it.
Paul.
Who actually is organizing this? Is it the chamber or?
I believe Mr. Wasserman is one of the main organizers. He's the one that met with Ray.
Okay. Does he want to take on Halloween?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. I'm not sure. I'll ask him. Anything else about the street closing? Again, that's July twenty-first through July twenty-second. The event will actually be from two PM to eleven forty-five, but we'll actually close the street down in time for setup and everything and cleanup. Next on our agenda is the Business Fair that's being put on by Student Senate, and Amanda Estock is here to talk to us about it. It'll be taking place on September eighth from eleven AM to three PM. So, Amanda, if you want to fill us in?
Yeah, Student Senate would like to basically give the local businesses in Athens an opportunity to reach out to the student body here at Ohio University, just an opportunity for some free commercializing. You know, we are a body of twenty, roughly twenty thousand students, so we feel like it'd be a great opportunity for them. Again, we'd like to close the portion, we'd like to ask you if we could close the portion of South Court Street from President Street to basically Baker Center, where Park Place begins, and from a window of eleven o'clock to three o'clock on Saturday, September eighth, so that we could throw this event.
Carol.
Amanda, where are you saying on Court Street?
South Court Street, it'd be, it would go from basically the, where Baker Center is, like where Mulberry and Park Place meet, and then all the way up to President Street, making President Street so accessible to traffic, and also making. Yeah, Mulberry and Park Place, so they can be accessible to traffic as well. So, it would just be that strip between both.
One block.
And the reason I ask is because the uptown business folks that said that they'd like to see it on Court Street wanted it right in the main block of Court Street, the block where the movie theater is in there. They wanted it right there so that the traffic would be amongst the businesses.
We thought about that, that it would kind of bring a, the idea of it being more off-campus to, you know, put the focus on Athens City and not so much Ohio University, because that's what we're trying to do, is bring the students off-campus. But then, we figured, this being the first year, we really think we'd get more traffic, more student traffic, you know, more students coming and going right by our Student Union Center, because we have a lot of students that pass through that area, whether it's, you know, to use Baker Center as the escalator to just get down the hill, or if they're actually using the Student Center that day. We feel like we get a really good participation rate, and if it all goes well this first year, we could look into moving it more uptown the second year, because then more students will be anticipating the event as an annual thing. So, they'll look for it rather than us looking for them.
Paul.
So, you want between Mulberry and President, and this is to get businesses well-known. Do you have strategies to get them further up the block, then? I mean, is this going to be like, well, okay, you're going to have this event first block in, so it's up to the businesses to try lure them down the next two blocks? Is that how it works?
Right, well, we didn't just focus on businesses that were on Court Street. We also called businesses that were located in Athens City, like on Stimson.
On East State.
Yeah.
We were talking about almost close, or close to two hundred businesses, so if it's not all on Court Street, we were calling all over the place, asking for any plot.
Is there going to be enough room if you get two hundred businesses?
We had a hundred that were, said that they were interested. I have, I mean, I feel like the area is wide enough to where we can set up like two rows of, you know, back-to-back of businesses. I think we could get, I'm just, you know, it's the first year, you never know how many businesses say that they're going to come and then not, so hopefully, we, we're anticipating on getting a lot of hesitant businesses, so we may start off with a small number, but next year, we'll be able to, you know, businesses will see that hopefully it's a good event, and more will come, and we'll just extend it.
I assume you're working with Larry behind you there, inside of it?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I want to follow up with Carol's comment. I mean, you don't think, it's only one more block, essentially, so it's not that far to move it into town. And, you know, you couldn't do like big footprints or something, I mean, just to kind of move people, I mean, it's really not that far, I guess is what I'm saying.
To a student, it is.
It's one more block. Well, all the better to move it up there.
It would be two blocks, too.
Two, oh my God, not two blocks.
Well, I mean, but I can certainly see, you know, being a student, I can see where they're coming from, and it makes sense to have it closer to where the students are going to be to entice them, because if they build up enough, you know, momentum behind this event, then it'll carry on for the years, and they can move it down the street. And, you know, considering the traffic as well, I mean, we'll still be able to keep traffic moving on Court Street, so.
And one more point I want to make about the location we chose is, we're really also reaching out to the new students on campus, and Court Street can be a bit intimidating for the first weekend that they're on campus, so, you know, they usually, some freshmen don't venture off-campus, you know, onto Court Street until they absolutely have to buy their books, so, like the second weekend. Well, I mean, I'm just, worst-case scenario, so I would, we felt like being close to Baker, the Student Union Center, that we're going to hit more new students at that location. But we're open to suggestion, I mean, we just felt that that was the best area.
And even if they were going up to buy their books, most students living on East Green would go past it, but we could, we're obviously going, we wanted to chalk the walks and make sure people know where it's at, and so, we can draw the big footprints and the big arrows to direct them to both uptown and to our event, so.
Yeah, and I suppose some of the businesses at their little booth could say, you know, walk a block for a five percent discount or something. I mean, I suppose that's possible.
Yeah, I think the main thing is to get them to actually start thinking about those uptown businesses and visiting them, and then pushing them up to the businesses. Debbie.
I actually think this location might be preferable in some ways, because it would be less disruptive to traffic.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, exactly.
So, something that will lure folks up to, out to the businesses later, you know, like a passport thing or something that, you know, would try to get folks to go visit several different places would be possible.
Especially in its first year, too.
Yeah. The question that I have is whether it's the same day that we would normally be doing the welcome-back cookouts. Do we, do we know which weekend we would want to do those welcome-back cookouts with our administration involved? And if so, is that going to divide our people too thinly? Because we're going to want to have people there to meet students, but we also have tried to have, you know, code enforcement and police officers and council members at the welcome cookouts in the neighborhoods to try to, you know, build more of a connection with students who are moving into different neighborhoods.
Go ahead.
This is a four-hour event, so it's not like the whole day. And what I would like to see happen is for us to have the picnic that we sponsor there instead of down on Mill Street and become a part of that. But that being said, I'm a little concerned about size there. If you got over a hundred business, plus we talked before about the arts market, and it would be a good idea if we all came to the same meeting at some point to talk about some of those logistics, because if the art market has music and various entertainment, it could take up a little space, too.
Well, since we do, having it at the south end of Court Street, you do have the options of closing off both Mulberry or Park Place and still having traffic be able to circulate throughout the city. So, you have another area to close off for another event in conjunction with the Business Fair that would allow traffic to pass.
I just think that the cookout in the Mill Street area is specifically to try to do outreach to students who are moving into the Mill Street area. So, I, Micah, and when we do the welcome-back cookouts, some of us go around to all the different ones, and they're spread out throughout the day, and it pretty much is a full day of going to those events. So, even though this is only a four-hour thing, I think we should think carefully about coordination or if they're happening on different weekends, because, you know, by trying to have the code enforcement office and police officers attend the cookouts in the neighborhoods, it's a chance for people to meet each other who are going to be living off-campus, and they may be different people than the ones who are hanging around the Student Center.
I agree. We could probably have something, though, sponsored at the Business Fair or something where we're there, but not moving the picnic. I wouldn't be in favor. Paul?
The other question really is, when is the picnic versus this Business Fair? That's the next thing we have to look at.
With the change, and, I mean, Off-Campus does it, too, right? Off-Campus and, so. I don't know when it's going to be.
You're not going to be there, right?
What?
Starting.
When does OU start classes next year?
Oh, we start the Tuesday before September eighth.
Okay.
Right after Labor Day.
Do you know when the freshman involvement fair is? The freshman involvement fair is the weekend before, I believe it's on Labor Day. On Monday.
Yeah, it's on Monday on the green.
So, there could be potential for maybe doing it on Sunday if we needed to move it to Sunday?
We can't, a lot of students move in on Sunday, and so, I don't think we'd get a really good turnout.
You mean move this to Sunday, the Business Fair?
Yeah.
Oh.
If we have the.
You mean the ninth?
Well, a lot, we would hate to do it before classes start, because a lot of off-campus students or, you know, or upperclassmen students who live on campus tend to pick the last minute to move in, you know, or they'll, moving, taking all day to move in.
I think your date is good, plus Saturday is more of a shopping day.
Carol?
I would just soon not mess with their date, because that's something they've been working with businesses on and tourism and all of that. So, if we can figure out a way to do something involving our picnic day, like move it to a different day, or something like that, but they really have gotten this word out for this date, and I think it would be a mistake on our part to change their date at this point.
Okay, so, why don't we find out more about the picnics and when that is? Is it, is the time flexible at all?
The time is flexible, definitely. We would like the four-hour window on lunchtime, though.
Okay. And I don't think we would want to make it any earlier.
Yeah. Earlier would not be best. But we do also want to throw out the idea of having a rain-out location being in the first, same day, but the first level of the parking garage, so we could have it underneath a enclosed area, but that would, that is not necessary.
There's still a lot of move-in going on, no?
Not so much.
Well, if students can't find the street, they're going Well, if students can't find the street, they're gonna have a really hard time finding the parking garage.
Yeah, it, that was just a la, like an end-all, I mean, if, if it had to come to that. We're ho, we are hoping for good weather, so hopefully we won't need that.
You have it in Baker.
In Baker Center.
On top of the map.
See if the university is, is up for that.
Couple of layers. Yeah, I mean, I just think the parking garage would be in the rain, I'm sorry, would be a really kind of depressing location.
Yeah, the Baker Center tends to...
And smelly. I'm glad you said that. I didn't say that. I mean...
I say it every time I have to.
The Baker Center tends to be booked, uh, very, like, in advance. So, I'm afraid that they're already, the date for September 8th is already, I mean, they're already booked for something.
Could be postponed a week, could it if it rains?
It can be.
I mean, I just wondered if you'd looked into that, 'cause I just...
We just hope that the businesses are flexible with their, their schedules.
I remember the one business that I did talk with, um, they were concerned about the rain, the rain date and whatnot, because the last time there was such an event, they weren't contacted and whatnot. So, we'd have to make sure that all of our, all of our ducks are in a row.
Wow, yeah.
Paul?
So, why don't you set a rain date as well as this 8th, um, the next weekend or something like that, just in case? I mean, just, you have a procedure ready for, to go, I assume?
Uh, we are thinking more a rain location, but we can, we can think of a rain date as an alternative.
Okay, I suggest you talk to the administration about using the parking garage and see what kind of, I don't know really how busy it gets on a Saturday on the first level, especially if it's raining.
Okay.
It's a terrible case.
Yeah.
Probably you're talking about the reserved parking area.
Well, we did speak to Ray, Ray Heslet.
And that's where the outlets are and everything else.
Okay.
The first level where the reserve parking is, is what, it might take the two hours if it got real big, but that would be all.
Okay, so that would work for the administration?
That could be done.
Okay.
I can't imagine students going there, though.
Well, there is a model for this, and that's, uh, actually Amanda and I had spoken about this. Um, we've used the parking garage in several events before. And it was used for a rain location for the bicentennial celebration that was a community/university event. It did pour, and it did move into the garage. And it was a hugely successful event. Um, it is a little further to move it, you know, all the way from Baker to the garage. But again, I was concerned about the, um, businesses having it on their calendar. It's, it's difficult for them to be totally flexible on, on some things like that. And that was why, um, I had suggested that perhaps a, a rain location was better than a, a rain gate. But maybe you need both and decide, you know, which one works for you.
Um, is, if you're, um, concerned about students finding a location, uh, we have faith in our Student Senate, um, that we could get the word out to students and make sure that they, you know, will find where we're, where it will be located. Uh, we have a great team working behind us with our executive, or, um, external.
Right, right. I know that, I was just saying that, that, you know, I mean, the original suggestion of having it further up Court Street, and you said students would never go there. That's what I'm reacting to. If they're not gonna go into the street, why would they ever go to a garage? That, I was really reacting to your sense that they couldn't walk another block.
Well, we're still, again, we're hoping that we don't have to use that second location.
Okay.
I mean, it, our first, by Baker would be our first choice.
Okay.
Anything else? So, maybe you'll look into rain date location, check with Baker to see if you're able to...
We'll definitely check with Baker Center, see if they're... A better link. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, she's been, she's been working on this since, I think, December. Is that when we first?
Uh, yeah, beginning of December.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I have only one miscellaneous, and it's just a quick announcement. Um, the, uh, street tour will be on Sunday at 1:00. Um, tent will be scheduled until 4:00, but should you need to get off the bus somewhere, we can, we can drop you. Um, and that, we pickup is in front of the city building downstairs. So, um, it'll just be one of the city buses. So, anybody who wants to come, please do.
Can we add some other things to it?
Yeah, anything that you guys have been sending to me, I've just been forwarding on to Andy. And yes, I'm meeting with him tomorrow at 1:00. So, maybe if you get anything to me before then, just so he has the ability to really plan out our, uh, our field trip.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have anything for transportation? Oh, and also Beautification Day is this Saturday. So, if you're looking...
Oh, it's this Sat?
Oh, wait, no.
It is.
Yeah, 14th, okay.
14th.
Oh, wow.
So, what's the schedule and location and all of that?
For Beautification Day?
Yeah.
Uh, last, I talked to Greg, uh, last week, and that's 9:30 down by McCracken.
Are, are they gonna do any, I remember when they were here, I suggested some cleanup uptown.
Mm-hmm.
Are they doing that?
Yeah, of course. They're, they're doing a huge Court Street project. I forwarded you the, all the information on the products that they were doing some time ago. Um, and Court Street was definitely one of them.
Okay.
I think they're putting almost 40 students up on Court Street.
Fabulous. Are they power washing?
Um, that was one of the things we discussed in our meeting. That takes, um, hoses and things like that, so I don't think they're gonna be able to get to that this year.
Okay.
And also donation of power washes. So, that was something that was very ideal, but not probable for this year.
Okay.
Paul?
Uh, last I heard, they weren't, um, up to where they went in terms of donations and sponsorship. Do you have any idea what's going on there?
I, I do not. I just know that, um, we had discussed, they, he, um, Greg made, I think, another 25 phone calls, um, out to businesses and such, and was getting some feedback. He was also asking for, um, things to be donated from the actual products that they were doing. Like, I think they're doing a project that, like, Christ the King Church, and they were gonna ask for them to donate some of the things, since they were donating the labor.
Mm-hmm.
Trade-off could be that they could help out with some of the supplies and such. So, I think they're okay.
Okay.
Um, in terms of that and how they're working out their budget. And we're adjourned. Thank you.
We have a Finance and Personnel Committee. Um, right now, I, I think I have two items on the agenda. The first one is, uh, request for some fund transfers. I'm gonna ask the mayor to talk about this. There's, um, some funds that are right now located in, in other administration in a transaction class. We need to move those into, um, another fund. But I need the mayor to clarify that for me, please.
I was looking at the February report, and N-120, which is other administration, is where we transfer all of the, um, time and effort for maintenance of vehicles to the Internal Service Fund. And I had budgeted that as we had in the old days to transaction class 600. Now, Kathy's gonna check tomorrow to make sure that wasn't on the ordinance you did in early February. But we're gonna move that to the 300 series, because now that's a chargeback versus a transfer. So, it's no change to the appropriations, but it's, it's there.
You're fine transferring. Oh, and we're up to some more?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Give me a couple of hours. All right, just go through them?
Please.
Okay. In, uh, November of last year was when we transferred the ticketing and use for, for lakefront busways to come into the Community Center when the Oasis closed.
Mm-hmm.
We've had some diff, difficulty only in our accounting procedures in the respect that the Community Center in 271 has been collecting the amounts of money paid by people there by MasterCard or other methods. Deposited so far in five and a half months, that's been $25,500. There has never been an appropriation line in Recreation to make that payment. So, we've been robbing, paying it out of the Transportation Fund, 214. Well, it's getting a little short now. So, we need to appropriate about $60,000 or $70,000 in 271 under, well, if you, Kathy will raise and say, it's not really a refund, but we'll, we'll give it a, a, a transaction class, probably 2300, because we're paying for services that have been purchased by the public. So, it's probably a contractual service. Uh, and then we'll make a, a journal entry to take care of what we've taken out of 214 this year to make those payments. Uh, we still don't really know, but there's, it, it bounces around a little bit. Like, January was 5,200, February was 7,600, March it was 6, 5,600. So, we're guessing a little bit of the amount. So, if we need to adjust that toward the end of the year, we'll get back to you about that. But it's just a pass-through of people paying for their bus tickets.
So, the 60K is for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our guess today. Uh, code office, this is where I need a little bit of money, about $2,000. Uh, when Steve and I and Ray went over, uh, their budget for the year, uh, I had budgeted $2,000 for training. But in the past year, we've had two code officers retire and be replaced. And we're having another one retire in June. And hopefully, we'll get that one replaced. What we had done a number of years ago was send our code officers to a workshop in Madison, Wisconsin, uh, that is put on by, uh, their national, uh, folks. It's very well-regarded. It's a week-long workshop. They cover about everything in relationship to code enforcement. Uh, if anybody wants the agenda, I can get that for them. It costs us, including, uh, transportation, workshop fees, and they stay in, I think, College Dorn, uh, up there. This happens usually in October or so. Uh, about a little over $1,300 per officer to do that, plus meals. So, I don't have enough money to do this. If we add 2,000, I could probably spend and send three code officers to it this fall. Uh, and I would recommend that we do that, because I think it's a, then the next year, I would probably spend sending the other two. So, so that we would have, uh, everybody refreshed in their training for, for code enforcement.
So, you'd be sending the new ones as a mix, or?
I'm gonna send prob, the two newest ones, I will. Probably the one, if, if we have that other, I'd probably send either, probably send Brian or, or Paul, because I wanna mix. You're right. Any questions on that one?
Number four?
Number four is, I got the, uh, report from our, uh, Consultants on Service Garage, R-C-R-A Drainwell Closure, an estimate of cost for this year. And I'm gonna have to review, uh, our budget on that. But it depends upon if they, if they're, if EPA and us ever agree on an implementation remedial action, because need to budget about $20,000 for that. But just the groundwater sampling, four times, uh, a year, is 20, about $25,000. Then their preparation of the, of a remediation plan. If, again, we go with that with EPA, an annual report they have to do, and then various meetings. We're gonna range of $61,000 to $81,000. Again, I wanna check the budget, make sure, but I think, I thought we, at least I'd update you on the ongoing activity and remind that this is, this is expensive, uh, proposition to do. But if, after Kathy and I meet tomorrow, we'll have, if the budget's okay or if needs it, I think it needs it, because I don't think I budgeted that much money for it.
Any questions?
Mayor, I was wondering why at the end of last year, the jail said that we were in arrears. Was it just an oops, or was it because we, because of the way we handled money at the end of the year? Remember, they said we hadn't paid our bills, therefore, we couldn't bring anyone up there and put them in jail?
Mm-hmm.
Um, why?
Okay, I have to remember, that's been a couple of months, so I can remember.
I know, it's been on my mind, I just never got it out to the town.
Um, as I recall, they usually are in the process of billing us 30 days or so after the fact. And we had, the November bill, as I recall, we had encumbered that and had not encumbered anything for December. That's the slip-up. When the November bill came in, it was actually, I think, $20 more than what we had encumbered. So, that got kicked back out of the system, because there wasn't enough money there to pay it. And so, it was delayed until the end of January, which then they said, oh, you're over 60 days past due, so we're gonna cut you off. That alerted us to the part of the problem. So, I paid up to the $20 there and then made an advance payment for January, as I told the bookkeeping system. And it would accept that, but then, of course, when the, you know, so that caught us up. And then when the January bill came in, we had a credit balance.
Okay, so I was, I guess I was concerned that, but when we get to next, um, at the end of the year, that we... It's not necessarily, but just the actions we took at the end of the year very summarily. I didn't want, I wanted to make sure they didn't affect our ability to pay the jail bill and other bills like that. I mean, I think there was some concern, at least in my mind. I did it with a certain amount of faith, you know, the unappropriating deal.
Right.
And, um, I just wanna make sure we don't have that again. 'Cause I thought maybe it was our actions rather than somebody else's, rather than the $20 slip-up.
No, it was, it, it wasn't council's actions at all.
Well, we disappropriate, unappropriated all that money. It was a little bizarre at the end.
I know.
And, you know, and it was, uh, sort of an auditor's reality deal. And I wanted to make sure that it was, you know, it didn't affect our standing. That's all.
I don't think it did.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions for Finance? Did the auditor have anything to say?
I don't think so.
Okay. Again, we'll get more information on this and bring these back probably to next session of council. That's, I'm adjourned.
Planning and Development Committee, I'm passing around copies of the chapter from the Comprehensive Plan Regarding Site Plan Review. I think when we talked about this before, people got a copy of this. But I wanted to make sure that you have it in your hands. The, the feedback from Gary was that we could pretty much just pull this in as a section of code. We're gonna have to write it up so that it, you know, matches our format and our layout, um, of how we structure that. But I wanted to make sure that everybody looks through this and flags any questions or things that we may wanna do differently. This was the, the recommendation from the consultants, um, that was approved by the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and the Planning Commission and, and council, that we ought to do this. Um, I know one question that was raised already was whether it should apply to two- and three-family residential, um, where this, um, in the list of things that it would not apply to, said, um, single-family, two-family, or three-family. So, I think that's a question that we should discuss. I don't think we should spend the time to, like, read through this point by point by point tonight. But I was thinking to just get the ball rolling on this, if everybody could take their copy of this, kind of circle things that you want us to discuss, and, you know, either email me or, or stick these in my box, then we can get working on drafting and, you know, discussion, discussion of any substantive concerns that people might have. Um, Paul, you look like you wanted to say something?
No.
Okay. What do people think about that as a way to proceed?
I think it's good, 'cause it's time to sit down, look at it, and then...
So, an umbrella chapter, and then zoning and other codes are under it.
Well, these, this would be its own, um, title.
Standalone?
Yeah. Because in, I think, until we have a planner who can really look through everything that's existing, I don't think we'd wanna get into the kind of restructuring of how zoning and subdivisions relate to each other. I think that the last time that happened, it raised some issues that we maybe haven't even ironed everything out yet. So, I wanna make sure that we have a professional helping us with any major restructuring of how sections of code relate to each other.
I thought that was Gary's recommendation, that's why I was asking.
Well, he said that it could just be a standalone title. So, I think that's probably the simplest way to proceed right now.
And we'll discuss it in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you could...
Email you, get some...
You know, by this weekend?
Sure.
Maybe to give me a little time to, you know, look into what other cities do, if there are, you know, substantive questions. Um, anybody else here who wants to talk to us about this? Oh, wait, I'm seeing hands up here at council first. Let me see, Bojinka and then Paul.
Um, it just reminds me of the planner, and I was wondering, where are we with that?
Do you have some applications for me?
No, I mean, are we in a, we have no applications. So we have nobody in the pipeline, even interview.
We have received no new applications so far.
30th of April, right? For a closing date?
Pardon?
30th of April, closing date?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a little bit of time yet.
I mean, where do we advertise?
Yeah, that's the question. Where do we have?
Well, we did it locally, the Columbus Dispatch, the Parkersburg paper. We put it on the State Association for Planners website. We put it on our website. That was pretty much, and that get, sometimes those get picked up by, by others when you start doing it on the web.
Like the APA, the American Planning Association?
Right.
We have there?
Whatever organization Bob's chair of this year in the state of Ohio, that's the one it's on.
The Ohio Planning Association.
What can we add in to make it more...
But, I mean, what I'm finding in talking to other cities, it's, it's a common problem. Planners are in short supply right now. If you're looking for a profession to get into, the students, it's wide open, because there's gonna be a large number of retirements coming up too, from what national projections are.
Paul?
Just for notation purposes, this is coming out of the Pogomar Plan, Phase Two Implementation, Chapter Five, right? Pages 20 onward. So anybody else out there who wants to follow along is welcome to do that.
20 through 22.
Yeah.
Okay. I saw a couple folks who want to talk to us. Greg?
Yeah. Do I need to go up or...
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the, I'm Greg Rogers, 14 Grantway Avenue in Athens. Just, just to follow up what I spoke about before. Comprehensive plan under the section that has to do with telecommunications ordinance, it has Section 1207.15 telecommunications facilities, Paragraph C, subsection I, number one, use regulations. I think this is something that ought to be covered in, in site planning, in site planning. So that, that would also link to having a communications, telecommunications ordinance too, that included the oversight of cell tower sighting. But I think it's, it comes under your committee as well as the communications environment.
If I remember, state law says we can't regulate cell towers.
Right. Oxford, Ohio does.
I'm just saying.
The ORC. The last BZA meeting in Oxford, Ohio was January 8 of '07. So I would suggest that people go, I actually sent on link, but it didn't work, go to the Oxford, Ohio website, and there's a whole listing. There's actually a, they've already got a telecommunications cell ordinance, and that's a good example for use for reference, even as a boilerplate. I'm sure the Safety Service Director could contact the Safety Service Director in Oxford. They just had a recent, like I said, a recent Board of Zoning Appeals, a discussion of the very thing that we talked about tonight, about putting a cell tower on a city facility located in an industrial area, by the way. But I think this is something that ought to be looked at and considered.
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to pass on. Thanks.
And Larry, did you want to talk to us? No? Okay. I thought I saw you perk up when I asked folks if they wanted to. Any other discussion on this? You just want to flag stuff, get it to me, so I can track down additional information if we need it? I want to try and keep this moving. Nancy?
I remember when the woman was here from, from the environmental part of Pogomar.
Davies Group.
What is it?
Davies Group.
Davies Group. And when we were talking about some things that I thought my neighbors were concerned about the, let's say, the Stewart Street construction, I'm afraid that the way this is written, the construction or enlargement of any single-family, two-family, or three-family residential unit, and it seems to me that the current interpretation of the code that's operative is that the footprint isn't enlarged, and therefore, land use can be intensified in roughly the same footprint. And I think I'm very concerned about that. You know, site plan review is just essentially meaningless if we, if this would be allowed with the footprint interpretation. So I think this has to be addressed in some systematic way, where you have a 40 by 100-foot lot that has 12 and 15 people living in it, an eighth of an acre, very small. And, you know, all, the whole yard basically converted to parking, with a pole structure to hold up the second floor to make sure, in some cases. I mean, I just think it's, when I was talking with her, and I think other people were, there was, I mean, that was certainly in the crosshairs, that even, we would not want that to continue to be a, an approach that is taken in the close-in areas. I don't think it creates a very good environment.
So do you want...
I don't know what I want.
Do you want to look for, like, cumulative definitions of enlargement and some...
Non-conforming use.
Definition of value in addition to footprint, maybe? Like size and value considerations?
Value or intensity of use.
Intensity of, yeah. I think.
Increase density, you mean?
Yeah. And so, I mean, I think it's, it's comforting because it, it does have a certain logic, but the problem is that the consequences are really... Not very good housing.
Okay. Well, I'll look and see what I can find in terms of other language defining enlarge, enlarging or renovating, and, and ways that communities define that. And if any of you come across examples, forward those to me also.
Okay. And so, could you just kind of walk us through in general, what would be the advantage of site plan review, provided we, we cross all the i's, leave out all the t's, and get all our issues taken care of, as you see it?
Well, I think the key is that, as the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee discussed these issues, this was something that I think some people spoke out really strongly about in the public meetings and some members of the steering committee, that if we're gonna have orderly, thoughtful development in the city, we need to have a process that is more consistent and a way to actually publicly consider the decisions that are being made. I mean, I think that it's part of professionalizing and the way we undertake development in the city, and it's part of being able to create, you know, one of the ideas, I think, with the comprehensive plan is that we can think about incentives and ways to encourage the, the kind of development that the community agreed on in those neighborhood plans, that there, there actually are some, you know, a lot of good thought that went into the comprehensive plan, and if we know what people's goals are, then we can try to incentivize those types of development in different areas. So, I mean, it should lead to a more consistent process and give us more tools to actually be able to implement the plan.
That sounds good. I just, I was thinking this would also be the equivalent, maybe not of subdivision regulations for the development of new land, but it would be certainly a way in our built-out city to put some order in and implement the plan as you said.
As you said.
So, much better.
You said it with fewer words, which I think is always appreciated.
It's only 8:15. We can handle it.
Anybody have miscellaneous for my committee?
Is there a discussion about doing hillside ordinances and changing the language in there? Or you want to wait on a planner on that?
Um, you know, we did have the, one of the committees that came out of the comprehensive planning process that worked on the land development ordinance, did provide a document with more detail that we could consider. I still have that. If people want, I could make copies for everybody, and we could put this on the next agenda. It had, in addition to some ideas for guidelines and, and more specific ways of, of implementing that purpose statement about preserving the size and shape of the topography, it had some sketches of, you know, examples of what that might mean. So I can dig that out, make copies for everybody, and we could have another discussion about that.
Okay.
Okay. Nancy?
Yeah, just think, going back to the Burgess and Ipele letter of January concerning the summit, in Point Four, under From a Geotechnical Perspective, they said, "It appears that the crest of this hill, where a majority of the cut will occur, is situated within the Monongahela Formation. Beneath this formation lies the Comana Formation, which appears to be where the fill slopes are anticipated. The Comana Formation is notorious for landslides." And I don't know how this relates to our land development code, but I wish we could find someone to, to deal with this and, you know, add a, add a general, level of generalization out with respect to the summit. But it says, "The proposed two-and-a-half height, one horizontal, one vertical slopes, which is like the university mall," you know, "would probably create something akin to that in terms of the, of the face of it. Shown in this here requires, require thorough investigation and analysis." So, you know, this tells me that we do have a pretty decent land development ordinance. I was reluctant to actually vote for, vote for it, but maybe it does need to be assessed.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at the university mall and...
Yeah, there's a, university mall. And I, you know, I was looking at the Hampton Inn, and I think it looks pretty ugly, myself in behind there.
It looks precarious.
Yeah. And so I don't know. I mean, I, it seems to me that this is a relatively, from the point of view of policy, as a policy body, I just wonder if we, we don't need to look at that, maybe next move.
Okay.
And one other item I see, I don't know if it covers in your planning and development, but the literature that we got for licensing contractors has been in the clerk's office for a couple of weeks now. Has anybody looked at it? And has anybody any thoughts about it? I guess it's a question. This is concerning contract, licensing contractors on all levels within the city, or many levels within the city. It's a, it's a pretty weighty piece of review of other cities and how they did it, and what they have in place, going from all the way from coast to coast, from New Jersey to Washington. And I've been looking at it, but again, I just wanted to know if anybody else has, and anybody has thoughts on it, and whether we want to do something about that at this time.
Have people had a chance to review that material?
Okay. Well, it's on the table there.
Okay.
So...
Oh, it's on the table.
Yes. It's, there's only one copy. It's mess.
Sounds like there's lots of homework then. I'll give people copies of the hillside stuff, the home, the contractor licensing information is on the table, and you're all gonna get back to me anything about site plan review? Okay, so lots of planning and development homework.
Can I watch TV till you...
Any other miscellaneous?
Communications and environment. In, in the past couple of weeks, as you all know, we passed an ordinance or to participate in the lead suit, which raised the whole issue of informing people about possible dangers from lead contamination. And so I have here a proposal. I had asked the Health Department to, Chuck Hammer at the Health Department, to provide some detail on what they might be able to provide in terms of public education on lead, since protecting yourself from lead, which is especially and primarily important for people with young children, is actually pretty easy. And so I thought it was a good opportunity to kind of inform people, since we believe that there may be some danger of lead contamination in certain older homes within the community. So here's, and it was, it printed out rather badly, so that's why I have some detail in the right. So we want a detail on what could be done. And so one thing is developing more information about lead poisoning prevention on the Health Department's webpage. Some printing for some in-depth educational materials that are not available in bulk. And I believe that the cost for both of those things is $100. Then apparently, there is a training and a license for a lead risk assessor, and we currently don't seem to have one at the Health Department. And so there's a, do you want one of these, Mayor? This...
That's about relief. I figured you didn't need it.
Oh, no, no. And so there's a, there's a $250 application fee for applying to become a lead risk assessor. There are, that's 250. There are a couple of different lead tests. One is a very, very simple one, and you can get 100 of them for $55. And there are more complex tests that are $30 a test, so I have not, that is not in the budget. And so basically, you know, this is a proposal to do a little bit more comprehensive lead education about protecting, as I say, especially children, from any possible lead contamination, which could be in paint, and that's what these little, you know, 100 of these little swabs for $55 can help in, in terms of lead detection.
Could you clarify, is that one swab, or is it multiple? Just one swab for the...
55? Oh, no, no, it's 100 swabs for $55.
Okay.
Okay.
And they only, you can only use them once?
Yes.
Kind of like a litmus test.
Yeah. And actually, you know, I discussed with him whether that was enough, and he said plenty, because they can't sit around too long. And I, and I just want to make sure that, you know, really, the public understands that this is only a problem in homes with paint pre-1978, if it hasn't been painted and refinished and repanelled. And as, and so it could be from ingesting the lead, if little kids kind of chew on window sills, or sometimes if it becomes, you know, raising the window or something up and down, you get some lead dust, which, as Debbie Phillips said, you can actually just, you know, wipe it with a damp cloth. But it's so simple. And, and if lead is an issue here, it all really just takes, is providing information for people so they can protect their families from lead. And so I, I would like to suggest that we allocate, I have down here, 100 for the in-depth materials, and 250 for the application fee for the risk, lead risk assessor license, and 55 for the tests. And then he also notes that there's a broken H-E-P-A vacuum cleaner on loan. Thank you. Which, you know, if we want to round up to 500, you know, I, I would, I would suggest that. But that's detail on, on what the $500 would buy us in terms of helping to inform citizens about protecting themselves from any kind of lead.
And how would it get translated from the Health Department to the citizen on the street?
Okay. Well, that's kind of their job. Okay?
Right. But I still ask, how will it happen?
That, well, webpage, okay. And part of what this printing costs is, you know, they have Health Department people who would be committed to providing this information to people. And, you know, might be some PSAs. We're gonna put, I believe, a PSA on the government channel. So I, I guess, I guess I would say, we would certainly follow up with the Health Department, but I know that they do a good job. I don't think they're gonna sit on the materials. I think they're gonna, they're gonna actually, you know, be committed to getting them out into the, into the public. And I discussed with him that there might be some outline areas or something that might require a little more attention.
Bojinka?
Yes.
So the 250 is for the application and training? Is that both?
Uh, no. It's only the application. So, so the Health Department...
They're already trained.
Well, the Health Department, this is not gonna cover all their expenses.
Okay.
Okay. They're obviously committing time and effort to this project also. This is to assist them and encourage them to, to spend, you know, extra time and resources on it.
I assume our wastewater treatment plant is certified for lead, water lead testing? Is that the case?
It's, it's an EPA requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're certified though for that.
Now, the thing about, if I could just talk out loud, since I used to work in water, that lead testing is supposed to take place at the tap, because when the water leaves the plant...
It's clean.
It's clean.
Yeah.
But as it travels through household plumbing, it may, if it sits in the pipes, it can leach some lead. Now, there's a really simple solution for this. If you think you have lead paint, I mean, not lead paint, lead solder or pipes, you simply let your water run, so the standing water, you know, is eliminated from the pipe. So I believe that that will also be part of this education program. It's a really simple fix. I mean, you just let your water run for a minute. And as I say, you know, the main thing is, this is really more of a problem for, you know, infants and young children. By the time you're, you know, it's not really a problem for college students, hey, they shouldn't be sucking the window sills, but, you know, they're older, their brains are developed. Their brains are developed. So, so really, it's pretty focused campaign on young kids.
Okay. So really, what's not included this, we're not including the lead dust test kit at $30 a test, nor are we including the water test at this point.
Correct.
Okay. So that's not part of the mix?
That is not part of the mix. Because the, the, the more expensive test is $30 per, and I didn't want to put a budget in here for that, because then we're saying, how many can we pay for? So I'm not, not putting that in there. So what's, what, what, what's my environment committee feeling, your environment committee?
I'm environment, your environment too.
Right. The environment committee feeling about this. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to find out if OU in Environmental Health and Safety has a person that specializes in lead already. And I guess when I looked at your numbers, my opinion was, okay, so we back out the student housing, because you say they don't suck the window sills, right? And so now we're left with 25 percent, and some of them probably do. I was listening to...
What, 25 percent?
Of the housing units that we would be targeting on this. And I was wondering, you know, just as, as a devil's advocate, because what would happen if we would buy 500, or 200, 100 of these lead tests... if we would buy 500, or 200, 100 of these lead test kits, and sell them to people free for a dollar? In other words, subsidize it, but make them pay something in, you know, sell them at utilities building alongside the, the garbage tags? You know what I mean? But just as an idea, as an idea of how we could, you don't have to do it there, you could do it anywhere, you know, in front of the city building, as far as that goes. But, but what I'm thinking is, if people are really, I mean, if you want to get the information out, why don't you have them take it home and find out who needs to get the lead test, the higher level test done? And I think that probably at that point, they might want to pay for that themselves, unless they're low in moderate income.
That's a good idea. That, that's a lot of person power. In, in other words?
I gotta check Amy's.
I, I mean, I don't see why that could not be in addition to, I mean, in, in other words, to say, okay, you know, we're kind of supporting the health department in informing people about lead paint, and the dangers of, therefore, and protecting themselves from it. And in addition, you know, I'm sure if, if we said to, you know, if we found someone to go where people want, you know, I don't know. It, it, it's an option, and say, if you'd like to buy it yourself, but it seems to me, administratively, for dollar, I've often thought that by the time you spend time doing it, it's cheaper to give some of these things away, frankly.
Okay, originally, last week, you were talking about about 500, so this is actually less money than you're talking about.
If, if we want to support that, if we want to throw in another 95, I have no idea what we'd do.
Okay, I'd be interested in finding out what the cost is of the training. In other words, how much, we're ponying up 250 for the application, it sounds like, but I'm not sure what training's involved, and how much the health department has to put any of in this.
Well, do we care? I mean, I, I just say that, you know, we, I just want to say that we spent some time and effort in saying, yes, let's ju, jump in the lawsuit. You know, to me, this is a very small expenditure. It's $500 to inform people about how they can protect their kids from ingesting lead. So, I don't see that this is, it is my understanding that even in the city council budget, we can afford 500. So, I guess I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure why this is such a struggle.
It's not a struggle.
It's not a struggle, we just want to make sure we get some bang for our buck, or it's not just an effort that goes into a website that some people might look at, but maybe not the 25 percent of the housing units that need to.
Right, and that's why, you know, working with the health department, I think, is really important, because their job is to inform people about these things. If we were saying, let's just stick it on the website, I agree with you, that's not necessarily gonna get to the people who need it. But, you know, we're depending on the expertise here of the health department, and there was some time put into this to say, here are some ideas that can help us increase our activities on lead poison prevention. So, I guess I'm, I'm assuming that they're competent in this area. Yes?
One thought about really getting information out in a way that's targeted to folks who need it would be the, the reference to in-depth educational materials that aren't available in bulk makes me think that there might be some overview materials that are available in bulk?
Yes.
And probably one of the simplest things that would get information to the parents of young children would be if they just went through the schools, home in backpacks.
Yes, yes. Actually, Scott just mentioned to me that he attempted to get some materials from the US EPA, and they're not available right now. So, I mean, point is, that once we begin to focus on this, and the health department is committed, and we show some commitment, there are simple solutions. We can get it out through the schools, and, and I think that's something they obviously know about and will follow up on. So, I would like to suggest, are there any questions? Any more questions on this?
Well, we just put out this in the utility bill, right? So, why couldn't we do something like this about lead? If you want.
Well, well, we could. I guess, I guess my sense is, although I have-
Send them to the health department.
Right.
I don't assume that they're incompetent, but I just think there's a disconnect between most people, except for inoculations and few things like that, and the health department. I don't think it's a standard pathway for most of us.
Okay, so if we were to say to them, and, and this obviously requires some more coordination, we'd, we'd put something in, I mean, I think, in the utility bills, if you guys develop it, you know, I see no problem with that, if that's something that you, that we feel we can do. Yeah, the question is, what is it? I mean, it seems to me that the health department ought to be the ones who, who vet the materials that we send. I, I'm not a health department. I mean, I know a little, you know, I know something about it, enough to have spoken about it, but I, I think it should come from the health department, 'cause it's a health issue. So, that, that's just my sense, that they ought to take a lead in saying, yes, this material, you know, is right for the age group and is, is vetted for accuracy. Any other thoughts? No? So, I mean, we can certainly, you know, this is not the final thing, but it's a way to, to begin kind of an initiative in this regard, helping protect people from lead.
I have no problem with 405. Repairing a vacuum, I don't know if we need to-
405, okay.
What is, what do you think, Jim?
I think you said four or five.
No, 405.
I'd just, I'd go with our original figure.
500?
Okay.
500. 'Cause that may cover some more children's materials.
I just don't know why, I mean, I think that you should also check OU and see if they have a lead person. I don't know. Maybe they couldn't work for it anymore. That's also a possibility, isn't it?
Couldn't work?
Well, I mean, there's just different specializations around.
They might have somebody.
You know, this is one of those things, okay, so we make the effort, and we'll see if it, it pans out. We've opted with, cooperated with the health department before on the hookah bars.
Yeah.
You know, but, see, but they came to us, and we put no money into it, they just did it because they were interested.
Well, I, I guess, to me, the main thing is, if we believe this is a problem, and there's a simple solution, and it will only cost us $500, why not do it?
I just want to make sure that, that there's something that's gonna happen from it, is all.
Okay, well, then, I can certainly make sure that we follow up with Chuck, and we say, give us a report every month. I mean-
Nancy has a meeting quota that she has to fill. We have to be here for at least two hours.
No, I just, I didn't know about this before.
Debbie Walker? Now, is this just an allocation from city council, or does it?
It can be.
It can be. Do, do I somehow make a recommendation that is-
You just write a check.
Parking meter fund.
Well, I've probably put that much in it. It's a good use for it. So, can we agree, can we agree that this is something that city council has chosen to do?
I have no problem with that. But one thing I do want to hear, I would like for information's sake to find out how much it costs to actually get training to be a lead risk assessor.
I can certainly find out.
Okay, 'cause I don't know what that means, when somebody gets certified. That's a, to me, that's a pricey certification.
It's online. We had someone, I think, in the code department certified at one time, but I don't know if we still have that person, or if the certification's current.
And I don't know what, if in-depth, it'd be as valuable as relatively shallow educational materials.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know if we really need that level of information.
Well, can we say that we're committed to help people understand how to protect themselves?
That 25 percent of our housing units.
We're gonna allocate some money, and, and we'll work out, we'll keep track of this, and we can provide, you know, ongoing input if we want to. We can look at the materials if you want, as long as we move forward. Okay?
Okay.
Yes? Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
I have miscellaneous.
Oh, miscellaneous, okay.
Under environment?
Um, yes, I have three questions. One is a communications question, and it was the Beyond the Bricks project-
Yes.
-that actually I worked with the students on-
Right.
-in Bajinko's class, and that was a comprehensive plan to improve communications between Athens City Council and Ohio University students, and it calls for interns.
Yes.
I would like to work at going a step further on this, and, and trying to get it lined up for fall, but one of the questions is, are there council members who are willing to work with these students to do the sort of logistical work that has to be done? And I believe that a university professor has to put in for the internships, is this correct, or employee?
I don't think so. Actually, I had mentioned this to Debbie because I, and this, of course, is a good thing to discuss, I thought maybe Debbie Walker would be kind of the ongoing supervisor for these people.
I'm not sure I think that's fair to Debbie.
Okay.
But that's why I'm saying, if there are council members who might be willing to take on an intern, I, I know I've had two people express some interest in this, and-
Two people who might be interns?
To, yes.
Fabulous.
But the other side of the coin is, I need to know if there are council people who would be willing to work with them, at least on a quarterly basis, as we go through. So, I think I can leave that as, let me know that if yes, and if you don't let me know, I probably will bug you and ask you if you're willing to take one on. But I think perhaps we need to have a little more information about exactly what would be required of those supervisors.
Okay, if it's a, if it's a public relations intern, which would be good, are, really the supervisor, it has to be cer, in order to get, in a sense, credit for it, it has to be 200 hours of work, and-
In a quarter?
Not necessarily, no. And this, and the supervisor just fills out an evaluation, and it has to be work related to, to public relations. But, you know, and, and so that, that would be, and that's simply a matter of, of basically advertising for the positions, and somebody, you're right, willing to put in the effort to supervise.
Right. The document has, the advertisements all written out.
Yep.
It has a course of study all written out-
Yep.
-for that particular project. So, it seems like that would not be difficult to implement.
Yeah, super. And I'm really glad you brought it up, because I, I was really kind of busy this week, and what I had wanted to do was, you know, what you're doing, is following up on that plan and saying, you know, here are several things that we should probably move forward with if people agree.
Do they have to be advertised? That was another question. If you've got this, the person that you've got the internship, so you don't have to go through that step?
No, no.
Okay?
I mean, just fill out an application, and I believe the application has to be signed, or at least something, by the supervisor.
Well-
At least in my internship and spirit.
By a university.
Yeah, see, there, I, I have to say that probably every department is different in terms of its requirements for internship. Like in journalism, it's 200 hours, and your supervisor fills something out. Well, actually, the student has to have advisor approval now, it's a new policy. Basically, here's what I'm gonna do, the advisor approves it, and then the supervisor just fills out an evaluation form at the end. Thank you.
Sorry, I just told Carol that I'd be more than willing to take on an intern. I sat through the Boogie of the Bricks presentation, and it was just fabulous, so, something that I would really like to work on. So, if you haven't had a chance to look over the packet-
Beyond the Bricks.
Beyond the Bricks.
Or beyond, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yeah, and, and thank you, because, yeah, this is great.
Too many bricks.
I, I did hand down copies of this, but it was thick, and, and, you know, so people could look through it again and say, you know, here are four or five things we'd really like to do.
Right.
And the intern could do it, that would be super.
Okay. Build a space for it.
I know, that's exactly what I see.
I know.
Well, but, but it is talking about communicating in a way that students pay attention to, and the idea of having a page, you know, more related to students off the website would be fabulous. I mean, that's how students, you know, communicate.
Well, and the theory is, not just someone working with us, but that someone is going back to the student entities as well.
Right.
That it's not just an intern for city council.
Right.
It is the person who makes the connection between the two. So, I think it's very worthwhile.
Now, was that, was the proposal there? Because I know that, it must have been the Halloween proposal had three interns. Is this a one intern?
This is three interns.
Three interns, that's what I thought, yeah.
But it wouldn't have to be.
No, but I think it could be nice.
Could we clarify, that means that the students are working in their academic departments and earning credit, and then they work for you?
That is correct.
That's basically what it is?
Yes.
It's not like the other one, and-
But, in, in our, in school of journalism, you don't get academic credit, but you get some recognition that you've done the work, and it's a requirement.
Really?
Yeah, so different departments give academic credit or not.
But these are not paid interns.
Not paid.
Right.
Some internships are paid.
Right, I know.
These are not.
Other questions?
My other questions have to do with what's happened with the hazardous waste day. Nancy, is there more?
We're having a meeting of the solid waste committee in two weeks, so we'll be able to talk about it then.
Okay, okay.
And again, my knowledge of that is, they're waiting for the Athens Hocken Waste District's waiting for what goes on with the contract with the university.
Yeah.
Because that will affect their budget and what they do.
Because if they lose, they're gonna have to lay off 10 people.
Right.
They will lose 10 jobs.
On, on the other hand, we can, as discussed before, we could start it up ourselves, but again, we're all aiming at September anyway, so we have time to do this.
Right, but, you know, September is a way of coming right up.
Yes.
But anyway, just one is to keep an eyeball on that one, and the other is the cool cities. Where are we with that?
Last I heard was, the mayor's staff was getting back to him on the energy levels that were required. Is that the case?
We adopted.
Okay. We adopted, but we haven't applied yet.
We're inclusive cool cities.
Inclusive cool cities.
There was one more thing we were doing without that.
Carol, and bringing up things in terms of, have we gotten any feedback about Halloween? In terms of master ceremonies, a Halloween czar, or something like that?
Yeah.
As I, I've explained a little bit before, Paige Elast has been working on this a great deal. When I spoke with her last week, she did say that she had not had any of the, the students who had worked and had ideas, any of them actually contact her. That's the link as far as the work that she's doing. Might somebody be hired to implement this further? Maybe, but not if there's nothing really to implement.
Now, wait, could I ask, you mean, the students that developed, 90 students who worked on various plans that had a lot of similarities, you, you mean she's waiting for some of them to contact her?
I would say yes. That if they want to be involved in the process, and that's what I've said to groups when they've asked me-
Okay.
-call Paige and say what you would like to do in terms of participation of Halloween, because how would she even know?
Okay, but, but I was thinking, you know, the idea of having some central management of it, and a central vision of it, that's something she's working on, right?
She is trying to coordinate that, yes, and she's working very closely with the clean and safe folks, keeping them involved. I have spoken with her a lot about this, but she really would like to see that student element. And what I've been saying to students, especially when I've talked to somebody that's in a small, in a group of some sort, if they would come up with an event or something, one thing that they might be able to contribute to the Halloween, that that might be a way to approach it, so that we're no longer looking at this huge thing of fix Halloween, but rather, my fraternity, my sorority would like to do such and such. We'd like to sponsor pancake breakfast, or whatever.
Okay, well, maybe, all right, speaking of this, because I know that recommendation, there was also these interns, I mean, maybe there needs to be kind of a university student senate maybe can do this, unless they're graduating, you know, coordinating committee. I mean, seriously, there's a, there's this lack of communication.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Just because I met with, I met, I met with Tim Bombville last night, the city and county, we're all, we all know who Tim is, city and county commissioner. He's been working ever since the fence proposal, and putting together like a mini student Halloween task force, almost, incorporating some of the administration, as well as the student body into this. I think what he told me, he had about 10 people involved and committed to this. And his next question was, where do we go now? Who, because he wants to-
To Paige.
Right, so now I know the answer. So, the student body, you know, that's what I was going to ask you tonight, is, you know, who do I send them to? So, he's got ten people ready, rearing, you know, to go. So, that part is mapped in. So, all I got to do is say, hey, Tim, email Paige, and then they'll get together. But I just want to be sure that this is something that's central, and that there aren't, everyone's working on this together, you know, same meeting, same --
They are, and she will be delighted, because she felt that was the one sort of missing element, that she wanted that energy.
Well, no, yeah, he's been working on it. Good. Excellent.
I was going to say, one thing about, I know you're at the presentations, you know, one of the presentations had a really nice management structure with the, oh, the kind of volunteer committee with representatives from the key, I want to say constituents or stakeholders, universities, students, clean and safe, I think, business owners. It was one of the business school presentations. Do you know if she's working on that kind of a, kind of an oversight committee for it?
I would say it's sort of growing on its own.
Okay.
I hear tourism, clean and safe.
Okay.
Some separate community members, and now the student element.
And she's basically coordinating it. I mean, I think that's important. Yeah. I mean, I think it's really important, somebody do that.
I would agree. And what she said to me is that when things are together enough to come back to council and say, okay, this is what's happened, this is what we need, that she will do that.
Okay. Great.
That she will come and talk to us about deliverables.
Okay.
Good. Thank you for bringing those up.
Any other miscellaneous?
Well, just as long as we're talking about Halloween as an environment and communications committee.
I know it's communications.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a stretch here, folks.
Communicate at Halloween.
I would just, I mean, if all of these groups come up with something, some different proposal, then we'll be able to consider that. But at some point, we have to, you know, suspend the noise ordinance.
Oh, right.
Pass the vending thing, close the street, one way or the other, right?